Okay, it's nine o'clock. A meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the central jury room at the Hood County Justice Center, 1200 West Pearl Street, Granbury, Texas. Would you all please rise for the invocation and the pledges?
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today as your humble servants, both professionally and personally. We seek your guidance and wisdom in carrying out our duties and responsibilities. We ask that you give us clear focus on your teachings and that we apply them in all that we do. Please keep a watchful eye over us this week and bring the troops home safely. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Y'all join me in pledging allegiance to this great nation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all very much. Do we have any special presentations today? None? I think we have a proclamation for DARE. Sergeant Brown, would you come forward? Commissioner Barton is going to read the proclamation.
Whereas, DARE, drug abuse resistance education teaches young people ways to resist peer pressure to experiment with drugs, alcohol, and join gangs. Whereas, DARE targets young people when they are most vulnerable to tremendous peer pressure and teaches the skills to make positive decisions and avoid negative behaviors. Whereas, DARE is taught in more than 300,000 classrooms in all 50 states and 54 countries around the world. Whereas, over 36 million kindergarten through 12th grade students are positively impacted by DARE each year. Whereas, the DARE program is taught by veteran police officers who have direct experience with criminals whose lives have been ruined by substance abuse. Whereas, each police officer who teaches the DARE program completes an 80-hour training course that includes instruction in teaching techniques, officer-school relationships, development of self-esteem, child development, and communication skills. Whereas, the DARE curriculum helps students recognize and successfully manage stress, evaluate risk-taking behaviors, resist gang pressure, apply effective decision-making skills, and evaluate the consequences of the choices available to them. Whereas, the DARE program has achieved outstanding success teaching positive and effective approaches to some of the most difficult problems facing our young people today: substance abuse, violence, and gangs. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Darrell Cockrum, County Judge of Hood County, Texas, that April 16, 2015 is designated as DARE Day in Hood County, and that the people of Hood County are encouraged to observe that day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Signed on the 14th day of April 2015, Darrell Cockrum, Hood County Judge.
Okay, reason deputy, Sergeant Brown, excuse me, is up here. And I wanted her to read the proclamation, but evidently there's something wrong with her voice today, so she couldn't do it. But we, I've been to a lot of those graduations, and it's a great program, and we're glad to support it. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Dever. Is there a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Sergeant, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much for making it DARE Day. The President had already made Thursday, April 16, National DARE Day for the United States, and I wanted it to be here in Hood County. It is an important program, and thank you for your continued...
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Okay, it is, I have two people who want to speak, James Logan and Doug Shaw, on the, on a couple of issues. Does any other citizen wish to make any comments about any agenda items? If so, would you please raise your hand so the sheriff can give you a form? Okay, seeing none, I will accept a, does any commissioner wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull off H.
G.
Pull off H and G?
One, two.
Pardon?
Okay, yeah.
Both of them?
I was gonna pull H, but Jeff pulled it, so G and H.
Okay.
That being said, Judge, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, item A through I, with the exception of G and H.
Okay. I have a second?
Second.
Secuted, a motion made by Commissioner Barry, secured by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item G, Judge, this is just a clarification. James McCoslin, he's in the audience, but approve a new fee schedule for the collection station. About two months ago, we approved in January a new fee schedule. The issue that came up is that trailers are listed as one item, so we're having single-axle trailers and double-axle trailers show up, and what James has done with his staff is just broke those out. So that way, if you're in a single-axle trailer versus a double-axle or a gooseneck, he now has clarification. That's what that, this is about. With that, I make a motion that we approve the new schedule.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Barry to approve item G on the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Secuted by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion on item G? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Commissioner?
Okay. On this military surplus plus property application on the 1033, there's nothing mentioned about precinct 3.
Okay, I, I will entertain a motion to authorize County Judge to sign the military property application for constables in precinct 1, 2, 3, and 4.
One of your discussions on the consent agenda?
Pardon?
One of your discussions on the consent agenda? One of your...
Yeah, we, if this is already on there, we'll just pull that one off. Does any constable wish to address this item? We've already had a motion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, somebody has to speak on something.
I didn't know if a constable was here, was it?
Oh, you're four.
Oh, yeah, yeah. James Logan, would you like to come forward and talk about that? Sorry.
I'm sorry, it wasn't clear, are you gonna pull it off, or did you want me to still address?
Go ahead, address it.
Okay, yeah, I just had some comments I wanted to make a little briefly. My name is Jim Logan. My wife Carla and I recently moved to Hood County, and while we've lived here only a short time, we're kind of concerned about the way things are going, just federally, locally, and state. And with the recent attention on certain items, the military hardware surplus thing, my wife and I are opposed to going forward with that, and I just wanted to issue three points on that, why we would be opposed to it. First, we believe that, well, it's probably intended to help the public safety. We've seen time and again on the news, the good intentions of using this military hardware seem to have spiraled out of control. Once the hardware is in place, a natural human tendency will be to want to use it. And based on an article from WND, I liked this a little bit, the article noted that along with the increase in the number of SWAT teams that has come corresponding to increase in raids by military-style trained officers, in the '70s, there were just a few hundred raids per year. However, by the 1980s, the raids jumped to 3,000. In 2005, the number is up to 50,000. So as you use this military and get this military surplus hardware, the tendency is to want to use it, so, and start using it for a wide variety of things other than just extreme situations. Since it's our belief that the only overwhelming majority of law enforcement action would never require such excessive force, it's better not to tempt fate and expose residents to the use sometimes accompanies this hardware. Secondly, we believe it's far better to thwart our county locally. The federal government, over time, has proven its willingness to disregard individual rights and states' rights. This current administration is particularly guilty of these abuses, since that has proven to be the case, it's far better to no longer allow the camel to get its nose under the tent, so to speak. Since 1878, the Posse Comitatus Act has prevented federal government from using its military to enforce federal estate laws by offering surplus equipment and training, and many, I and many others see this as just an end run around the law. And lastly, the final count is based on this quote by Thomas Jefferson. "I have no, I know of no safe depository of the ultimate powers of society but the people themselves. And if we think them not enlightened enough to exercise their control with wholesome discretion, the remedy is not to take it from them, but to inform their discretion." In essence, what I would ask, the Commissioner's Court, at least make it more public that we're intending to buy surplus hardware and let the people of the county have greater input on this, because I found out about this by accident. And I would request, at very least, that we delay this till properly notifying the residents of Hood County, so that we can notify their discretion. I'm concerned that if we truly need this equipment, the public needs to understand what that threat is and what truly the best method to deal with it is. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I was approached by a constable about this, and there are certain things that they, we purchase for them that they can get for, through this military program without cost to the county. So I, I went over some of those things that you're talking about and made sure that they're not gonna order a tank or anything like that. So this is just for, you know, things that they, you know, that we buy and they use, and that's what I've been assured of, and, you know, so that's, that's the reason it's on here. So, but thank you for your comments. I like it, but I, is any, anybody, any commissioner wish to comment?
Well, Henry, we, the sheriff does this program, and the constables are asking, but we're not purchasing anything. It's donated equipment that comes from the military, from the federal government. One of the items that we have gotten or secured at Road Ops is a forklift, and that forklift helps us in a lot of different ways. So I appreciate your comments, but at the same time, there are file cabinets, there's desks, there, the forklift that we use at road operations, so, you know, and it is, it is not purchased with county budgetary money, and each elected official is the one that requests to buy it.
Well, I remember, you know, Commissioner, some of the commissioners, I won't call any names, but they were against us getting Humvees, when we had Humvees, and they're sitting over in the yard right now, and, but when we had the tornado, those were really, they really came in handy to, you know, for search and rescue, search and recovery, and things like that, so, but, you know, I agree, we don't need any, we don't need, you know, rocket launchers or anything like that, so, but anyway, that's what this is for. And we, basically, they, once they do this, they still have to come in front of the court and say, "We want to do that," because the sheriff did when he was on in Humvees, and he...
Has to be insured.
Yeah, insurance, it costs us because they're on our insurance policy, so, you know, and they get about four miles to the gallon, so that's the reason they're not used, except in emergencies, floods, and a tornado, and things like that. Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Tout to authorize the County Judge to sign a military surplus property application for precincts 1, 2, 3, and 4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Barry. Is there any further discussion on this? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I have missed one thing that I would like Doug Shaw to come forward right now. I'm a little out of order here. This is, he is the new general manager of the Upper Trinity River Groundwater District, and so I'll turn it over to you.
Gentlemen, thank you, I appreciate giving me this time. I just wanted to briefly introduce myself as the new general manager of the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District. I've actually been there since February, hadn't had an opportunity to get down here and visit with you all yet. Just a brief background of myself, I'm actually from the area. I grew up on a dairy down in Godley. Went to school at Tarleton in Stevensville, got both my degrees there. Spent the last decade working in Austin, and I am very, very, very happy to be back in North Texas. Just wanted to kind of introduce myself to you, just one informational item I have. I didn't know if you all are aware yet, but this court appoints my board members every odd number of years. We have terms expiring. There was one of the terms expiring this year. Commissioner's Court would need to appoint someone by June 1st.
It's on the 28th agenda already.
Okay, I, I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure, and basically be on record as to informing you all, so y'all could be aware of that.
Yeah, I got your letter, so...
Yeah, we sent that out last week, and I wanted to, like I said, I wanted to make sure that...
It was too late to get it on this agenda, but, so it's on the next one.
Alrighty. Other than that, like I said, just wanted to briefly introduce myself. I'm available for any questions now, or anything you, y'all ever need, just give me a call.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Anything to get out of that Austin traffic, right?
No, kidding.
All right, purchasing. Approve a contract renewal for RFB 2011 dash 002 rental equipment alternate for the RDO equipment. Is that not, am I out of order here?
In the agenda.
Is that part of the consent? Well, see, that's what, by me getting, forgetting Mr. Shaw, and, all right, I guess road divisions, plats?
Morning, Judge Cockrum.
Yes, sir.
Come here, nurse. Judge, this morning, I have a public hearing to establish a three-way stop section at Boski River Drive and Brazos River Drive, Comanche Cove subdivision. This was initiated by the HOA of Comanche Cove through Commissioner Barton. Looked at it, taking measurements. Reason for it was for safety reasons, for buses and just for... After looking at it, the road operation does recommend placing these two stop signs on either side of Boski River, home Brazos River to...
Okay, hold on one minute. A public hearing is now open to discuss the three-way stop at the intersection of Boski River Drive and Brazos River Drive in Comanche Cove subdivision by placing two stop signs on Brazos River Drive. Does anyone wish to make any comments about this? We'll see, none. The public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve these three-way stop signs.
Show moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action on accepting the following dedicated roadways to OTS precinct 4 for passable maintenance. Commissioner, you want to discuss that?
There's two roads that the HOA has approached. Mr. Lenny and I about Cedar Hill Street from West Oak Trail to East Briarwood Street, 2,725 feet. Forest Park Drive from West Oak Trail to Green Oaks Drive, 1,615 feet. History on Oak Trail Shores in 1969, 1970, when Oak Trail Shores was developed, the roads were deeded and dedicated, but they were never accepted for county maintenance. So there will be no petitions associated with these roadways like there will be on some of the other roads we do, because they weren't dedicated and deeded properly. They were just never accepted back in the late '60s and early '70s for the road maintenance. HOA in the past has come to the Commissioner's Court and with Don, and we've worked on a policy of accepting a mile, a mile and a half of road in that subdivision to try to get those up to standard. Would that be correct, Mr. Lenny?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept.
You're making a motion to accept that? Mr. Lenny, do you have anything else to say about that?
No, sorry, no.
Okay, do I have a second for this?
Second.
Secuted made by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action on accepting the following dedicated roadways to Oak Hill. Precinct 1, precinct 1, you want to discuss this?
Yeah, same thing as Commissioner Barry said, these roads were not accepted, but they were deeded, and I have an issue here of one road. There's a lady that has trouble getting her daughter to school, and the bus will not run down that route, and she has to walk that girl in dark, and she's, her vision is not very good, and has had nearly several accidents doing that. I request the court to allow me to take in Pepper Tree and Woodlake. One road is 920 feet, the other road is 1,585. I'd like to make a motion for the court to set these.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, secured by Commissioner Barry. Is any further discussion on this? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Development and compliance?
Judge, the first one we have in compliance is the final plat for your view. It's the final plat of six oaks addition, consisting of planting lots 1 through 4 out of a 30-acre tract. Lots 1 through 4 total nine acres, and average approximately 2 and 1/4 acre each. Property is located within the Road Quarter District in precinct 1. entirety of the remaining 21-acre tract lies within a flood zone due to a tributary of the South Fork Creek. Final plat of lots 1 through 4, block 1, six oaks, phase 1, meets the planting requirements of Hood County, and staff makes a recommendation to approve.
Okay, do we have anyone who'd like to speak on this in the audience? Well then, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat for lots 1 through 4, block 1, six oaks, phase 1.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Set a public hearing for the replats of lots 176R, unit 1, Pecan Plantation.
Judge, staff recommends setting a public hearing for the May 26, Commissioner's Court meeting.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to set this public hearing at May 26 for replat of lots 176R, unit 1, Pecan Plantation.
Show moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Budget and finance, consider budget line item amendments.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I don't have any budget amendments today, however, a couple of purchases have been requested that exceed the $250 limit to come from the supplies line, and I'd like to ask the purchasing agent, he would address the court about those questions according to your policy.
Should I have a copy of this? I passed out this one. Please refer to the jail. The jail was not having a supply line. The sheriff's office has offered to take this out of the supply line. In the past, y'all have always wanted me to bring forward anything over 250 that's out of supply to me. And that's why I'm here today. So Roger's here to address any questions about the actual items needed.
Are these new items, or are we replacing old items?
It's in the financials, well, that's what we asked that question prior to court, Judge, and that's why she's bringing it. Policy says, when we took the line item out for small appliances or small equipment, I asked the same question prior to court starting, and Nelda explained that that's why he's asking to bite out of his supply line, and that's why he's at before the court. So he has the money in that supply line, he has a huge supply line. Only thing is, we're setting precedent, as I pointed to Nelda, somebody else will come forward wanting to use their supply line, which is normally paper pens and cartridges.
Okay, so it's in the normal payment of bills? It's just cover, cover now?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Did anybody have any questions for the sheriff or Nelda on this? Jeff's already asked one.
Well, I need to know if you will allow this out of the supply line, that one.
Should that be a line item amendment or something, Stan?
No, Your Honor, I have no problem with that. It's a matter of interpretation and a request of the court that it come on one expense supply. I've had a previous group...
Okay.
We ratify paying the bills. Without that exception, it'll go through, is what Nelda told me. That be correct? Okay.
All right, thank you all very much. Stanley, you're back up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Judge and Commissioners, the bills for your consideration today come to a total of $415,434.56. Some of the larger items that are on the list that you have received, there's $19,085 to Ben E. Keith for jail groceries. There's $30,787.49 to the City of Granbury for utilities. There's an internal transfer into the Indigent Defense Fund 112, that is in the amount of $36,449.20 to Erath County, the amount of $17,820 for keeping of inmates in Erath County rather than Hood County. To HEB Grocery Company LP, this is a scheduled rebate under the Section 381 Tax Abatement Agreement. It represents one-half of their property taxes paid to the county government in the amount of $28,073.05. And there's a corresponding amount to NEC US 377 and Meander Road Limited Partnership, that is HEB's affiliate for the management of their real estate properties. That is a tax rebate in the amount of $10,668.17, and it represents one-half of their property taxes paid to Hood County. And then a payment to Knight Security Systems LLC in the amount of $44,505.39. That's a portion of the amount that is due to repair the security system in this building. Then to Stalker Radar for the purchase of equipment, $10,170. To US Bank National Association, $21,941.32. That's the purchases of fuel on the fuel cards. And we're still running quite a bit less than was budgeted and quite a bit less than we spent last year for fuel purchases. Then to Vulcan Materials Company, $24,215.99 for road building and repair materials. We ask your permission to pay these bills.
With those two exceptions? Yeah.
Which exceptions would that be?
That ones that Nelda talked about. Oh, haven't been purchased? Oh, okay.
They haven't been ordered yet.
All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve paying the bills.
I have one question, Stan. In the $44,505 for Knight Security, on that payable number, that is coming out of the security fund?
Courthouse Security.
Correct. That's correct.
So that's only what that money was used for, and that's where that money's coming from?
That's correct, and I believe most of the available money in that fund has already been spoken for.
Okay, that's fine. Make a motion to ratify paying the bills.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and accept the county attorney's report. Did you get your umbrella back this morning?
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. As I've been doing since 2013, sending you with the first quarter report card from this year, January 1, 2015, to March 31, 2015. I would say that our numbers are all fairly consistent with what they have been, with the exception of our new cases that are coming in. We only had 119 new cases come in in three months. Normally, we have three times that many. Normally we have three times that many. Um, I don't think it's due to the crime rate being down, I really think it's due to, uh, our DPS caseload is way down because most of our troopers are at the border serving. And so we've had far fewer DPS cases.
By the way, I have written to state and, uh, highly complaining about that, so.
Yesterday we had to send, well, yesterday we had to send my investigator to go pick up some drugs in Abilene because it wasn't available that could do it. So it's really been a burden on, on everyone.
Well, one of the things too, I noticed that, uh, they're, since they're gone, that the, uh, the amount of tickets that is collected in the county is going way down, so.
For my purposes, it would be DWIs and cases like that because of that. But nonetheless, we are forging on, uh, we did resolve 406 cases and we, we took in 119 new. So normally our balance is the same, so we're, we're way over on the number that we resold. It is good hitting those out. Um, uh, as Commissioner Barry has asked me before, that cases rejected number of 39, those represent cases where there are minor misdemeanor charges along with felonies. And for the most part, we've rejected those trying to keep our indigent defense budget, uh, as little as we can, uh, in those cases. If I reject those cases before they get filed, then we don't have to pay on a misdemeanor also on a company. That's what that number represents. And if there's any other questions about anything, I.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Casper?
How many, how many, uh, people are, have been charged with felonies and misdemeanors?
A lot. Um, if the misdemeanors are family violence related or theft or DWI, I, I don't reject them. But if they are, say someone has one Xanax in their pocket and then they also have a pound of methamphetamine, I don't prosecute the Xanax pill. It's gonna get you into the larger felony at some time later.
Okay.
But that has helped us cut down on our cases. I can get that, that number, I mean, I can probably.
I was just curious, I'm not.
Um, I do, I did notice yesterday in the jail, um, out of 100 and about 70 inmates are only 11 that were pending misdemeanor. I think it's good.
All right, thank you very much. I entertain a motion to accept the, uh, Hood County Attorney's Report.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Deaver, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barry. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, discuss and take action on the county dispatch interlocal agreement dated November 2011, Commissioner, precinct two.
My research in this matter is driven by Title VII of the Texas Local Government Code, which states, "A provider must be fairly compensated for services and functions they provide." There's no issue that the City of Granbury compensates the county for dispatch services. That is clear that the City of Granbury has compensated the county since the inception of this agreement and other agreements. The issue for me hinges on the determination of quote "fair compensation" as required by the Texas code. Currently, the City of Granbury reimburses Hood County $35,000 annually for emergency services dispatch services. That figure has not changed since the inception of the dispatch agreement many years ago. Over time, the county's cost to deliver those specific dedicated services has risen to approximately $245,000. My concern is that the $35,000 reimbursement does not fairly compensate the county for dispatch services rendered and consequently, the county is not complying with the in spirit and intent of the code by not requiring fair compensation. What is fair compensation? My first slide, please. Yep. The average annual county dispatcher salary is, uh, $34,000 annually. Additionally, the county funds, insurance and benefits for each dispatcher at a cost of approximately $15,000 each for a combined dispatcher annual compensation package of $49,000 per employee. Next slide. The dedicated dispatcher position for the city requires three shifts, 24/7/365. In order to adequately staff a three shift, 24/7/365 position, it requires five personnel. Five personnel are required to offset training time, time off, compensatory time, sick leave and vacation time. Next slide. In summary, the county pays $245,000 annually to meet the staffing requirements of a dedicated city dispatcher position. City of Granbury reimburses the county $35,000 annually. Let me be crystal clear on this point. I fully support providing continued dispatch services to the City of Granbury. However, I believe the current $35,000 city reimbursement does not, as Texas government code requires, fairly compensate the county. In layman's terms, the county is, in my mind, upside down on the current agreement. We're being asked to provide a $245,000 asset for $35,000 in return. The disparity between the two numbers is too far, too significant in my mind to be ignored. Based upon that reasoning, I move that the county terminate the existing agreement in accordance with section 11 of the agreement, which states, "Either party to the agreement may terminate this agreement without cause with written notification of termination one year from notification." This action, if it is taken, allows the city one full year to exercise their options to either negotiate a new dispatch agreement that fairly compensates the county or assume responsibility to provide their own dispatch service. That's all I have.
Commissioner, let me ask you one question. Are you bringing this up because we are, uh, in violation of the law?
Yes. Uh, my contacts, my contacts, uh, at the TAC, which is the Association of Counties, uh, has given me pause in that when I brought up this issue, um, they cited several other counties and city interlocal agreements, uh, in which that amount has been risen, has risen over time to keep pace with such things as inflation, modernization, et cetera. So, uh, that's my concern.
Okay, I, you know, this, this also was brought up when we were doing the YMCA, when we were gonna, uh, buy the land, we had to be, we had to fairly compensate the, the school for that land that we were gonna build a Y on. And so we paid $180,000 for that land, so it's, it's that same kind of situation, right? Okay, does anybody else have any question on that? If not, I'll entertain a second, uh, a second to, uh, Commissioner Barton's, uh, motion to, uh, to discontinue the, or to cancel the county-city dispatch local agreement, uh, giving them one year notice, right?
Or renegotiate.
Or renegotiate, whatever. Yeah. But right now it's to cancel.
Again, if I may interject again, and I'm hammering this point home, um, it makes sense for us to do the dispatch. Granbury's on, City of Granbury's on board with that, it's been paying us $35,000 for years. Our costs have risen dramatically. In order for them, uh, to, uh, fairly compensate, which I hope they will, uh, they need to raise, raise that amount.
Okay. Have a motion made by Commissioner Barton, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Are you gonna write that letter, Commissioner? Thank you. All right, consider and take appropriate action on the request from Sandra Walton, Marketing Director of the, uh, Granbury Chamber of Commerce, uh, to talk about the 2015 July 4th request. Hey, you're not Sandra.
I'm not Sandra.
Yeah, you're not nearly.
The gentleman earlier said we decided to go with the big gun.
I'd rather had the, the pretty.
Better looking.
Yeah, exactly.
I understand.
Thank you Judge and Commissioners, it's, uh, always a pleasure to, to come and, particularly when we're talking about July 4th, um, I, I gave you, passed out a sheet to you that, that sorta is a rough overview of what we've got scheduled so far and it's certainly subject to change. But, uh, we appreciate over the last, uh, however many years, this is our 41st, uh, July 4th celebration and we appreciate the, the county letting us use the square. This event brings approximately 80 to 100,000 people into our county over a three-day period. It has the potential of a two to five million dollar direct tourism impact. And, um, so it's, it's the biggest event that we do in Granbury and Hood County and of course is one that people always look forward to. And this year looks like it's going to be great. We're already more than half full of vendors and the parade, we're getting great applications. So, one of the things we, you'll notice on here that we thought would be appropriate is to, since, uh, the county has been so generous to let us use the square, that we might put you down as an in-kind sponsor if that, if that suits everyone. As far as the, uh, the time that we're asking for, we'd like to have the square available from July 2nd at 5:00 PM, vendor check-in, that's Thursday night. And through the Sunday, the 5th of July until probably about 9:00 PM. The city permit that will of course come to you folks too, uh, will, is in the process of, of being, uh, staffed. And of course, the insurance will all be on there. You'll be a named insurer for the property. And, uh, so that's, that's really about it. Uh, I would ask that you allow us to use the square, it's, it's always a great event and brings a lot of people into town, so be happy to answer any questions.
I really like that the 4th is on Saturday. I really like that. It's a good planning.
I tell you, it's, it's amazing when you look back over the numbers of people and vendor booths and, and sponsors and all that, uh, there is a definite increase and there's a definite decrease when it, when it falls on a Wednesday, I'll be for sure. Now, we're really fortunate too with the 4th being on Saturday. Of course, that means that the parade and the fireworks and all the big events will.
Good.
Judge, I'll make a motion that we allow the chamber to close the square 5 o'clock on July the 2nd and then reopen at 6:00 AM on July the 6th.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Barry and, uh, we really appreciate that in-kind listing of sponsorship too. Thank you very much for doing that. Uh, motion made by Commissioner Barry, you heard, uh, what he said, to close the square at, uh, at, at 5 o'clock on the 2nd and, uh, through, uh, Sunday, uh, July.
Monday morning, 6:00 AM on this.
Monday morning.
Monday morning, 6:00 AM.
Breathing room.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
Sure.
Seconded by Commissioner Deaver. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
If I might, Judge, I would also add that I'm assuming that the city and the council and the county will probably make Friday a holiday, but I assume that's down the road for y'all to decide.
We've already done that.
Have you?
Yeah.
All right, thank, thank you for your.
Thank you. All right, uh, Treasurer, consider and take appropriate action to authorize county judge to sign the arts agreement?
Judge and Commissioners, I would like to present the Arts Agreement. Opening, opening line in our notice to the county about this. Counties have more paperwork to file to meet obligations. I think all of you have probably already seen the forms, the IRS forms that our office and, nation of our office and personnel have, um, uh, six forms. The Arts Agreement is if we are a member of the TAC pool, they are offering services to us to help us beat these forms. We should, uh, uh, the nation can file. They will even go one step further in that they will mail the forms, 95 cents for mailing those. That situation I'll address at budget time. Everything else they are willing to do at no cost to the county if we are a member of the pool. Are. All we have to do is make sure we, uh, 30th, if we change after today's court, April 30th, we're gonna pay a 15. Richard just came to the TAC conference and I appreciate that we're all on board that this is a good.
I was gonna ask, you highly recommend this?
Absolutely. It's gonna place, it's gonna actually take a lot of work that we were gonna.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for Kathy on this? Because, uh, I know that, you know, this is kind of an unfunded mandate type deal situation. Doesn't come from the state necessarily this time, but it's coming from the federal government. They just skipped the state on this case. I'll entertain a motion to allow the county judge to sign the arts agreement.
So moved.
Commissioner Tout made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Uh, is any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ask that we go ahead and skip item C.
Okay, consider and take appropriate action regarding the measurement, uh, period, uh, date for, uh, tracking part-time variable and seasonal employees' hours work.
What this item is, is partly what we, what you all just granted, um, we are required by law to, under the new Affordable Act, to track the seasonal part-time hours and temporary hours of employees. Last September, August or September, I believe, Bob Lessie and Mary Gertes had TAC here and they presented all of this information to you. Measurement period was not selected at that time. Uh, I think we'll both stand. The auditor and this morning I, uh, I, and the recommendation is called, uh, we have one year, but that we will, um, track our part-time seasonal and temporary employees, not less than 30 days.
Does our new, uh, payroll system allow us to do that pretty fairly easy?
It's my understanding, um, this serve, it's my understanding that Tyler has acknowledged that they're going to be able to help us with all of this. Not on the system yet, we are able to download reports and dump them into Excel spreadsheets, but it helps.
Okay. So you say A, B and C go together?
Well, they're separate items. Um, measurement period has to be documented in the document and that it has to be given to TAC. And my recommendation is a 12-month look-back measurement period. Watch that every.
Well, let's talk about that. Tracking for part-time and variable. So your office or the auditor's office is gonna track if someone has part-time money, then they can use somebody part-time?
No, sir, I'm sorry. We're going to be tracking the number of hours that the part-time temporary. And we have to do that if we get over our policy curve of 24 hours. If it exceeds that 24 hours in a measurement period, let's say in a 12-month period, that employee exceeds 24 hours a week at 12-month period, the county's obligated to offer.
Hey, but it sounds to me like it's 24 hours a week. Are we gonna measure it by the week or are we gonna measure it by the year? Why, I mean.
Actually, the look-back period is so that you look back over a 12-month period, but I can assure you we won every pay period.
So is it a rolling look-back?
Yes.
But you don't have to do it at the end of February, look back from February, say 2014 to February 2015?
It's a calendar year.
You don't do it that way?
It's calendar.
So it's not really a rollback, a roll-in, okay?
It's a calendar year, that's why.
It's just calendar, okay.
And it's effective January 1st, 2015, and I should have...
Okay. Okay, and they...
One more question.
Go ahead.
Do you have somebody that you hired temporarily, January, February and about July, that you lose somebody or the budget changes and they're allowed to hire them? Is there a clause in there that shows for the Affordable Care Act and that paperwork? Because obviously, if you've used somebody, that's happened here before, you're temporarily using a seasonal or temporary employee. You lose a full-time employee, you bring that person on board, in a year's time, that average is going to be over 24 hours when you average that out across the board.
That's a question that's not been asked. The Treasurer's Association is the point. I know it's coming up next week, I go to conference and you have a session on that. I don't know if the press... Last week, but this is the event yesterday, so I have not had a chance to discuss this with them.
You understand my question, Richard?
And the acquisition was you, you offered some benefits to employees, less than your full-time workers. Their recognition is just that they're all going to work on a period of time. If yes, you will not have to offer, track anything for seasonal, temporary, part-time employees.
I'd help. Let me give you a example. Road operations have some... Three-month period, highly possible, health insurance. They would be eligible for health insurance within a 12-month period. They've not worked.
I'm more worried about the other direction though. I'm worried about somebody working in the JP's office, Constable's office, or county clerk or your office, part-time. We lose a full-time employee, we hire them mid-budget, then the government comes back and says, oh, you're over your 24 hours by 52, over 52-week period. Then they penalize us or we have to go back and make up that insurance for those six months.
That's the purpose of adopting this. We don't, we can't allow that to happen. We have to have that look-back period so we can go to that department and say...
Okay, so we're gonna allow, we're not gonna allow people to hire people then?
Can allow them to work more than 24 hours a week if you call them part-time, on average in a 12-month period.
I'm worried about somebody though that's training as a part-time employee and then they have the knowledge to do the full-time job, if we're using a one-year look-back, it's gonna penalize that employee.
Are you talking about going from part-time to full?
Yes.
That would not affect that situation.
It'll skew, it will skew your numbers though for the year.
Or Steve, are you talking about like somebody's office, that you have a part-time employee and they're working less than 24 hours a week and then the full-time employees, let's say, get sick and then you bring that part-time up?
Leaves, and you hire that person full-time.
Yeah.
They'd automatically be eligible for minimum pay.
But if we're gonna look back and they're gonna go back and monitor us and it'll, in the average, it'll put us over 24 for the other time, is what I'm saying.
They were considered a part-time employee.
Okay, as long as you're documenting it, I don't want, I just don't want a problem to come back, we can't hire somebody because they've gone over their hours.
At that time, they were considered part-time. Once they go full-time, they're under a different set of rules.
Okay. Kathy, can you, can you get the mic a little closer to you? No, it's all right, I just, I have, I don't know if anybody else up here is hard of hearing, but I am, so...
What?
I've been accused of being loud, so thank you.
Well, James, shame on you. All right, does anybody have anything else for Kathy on this? Well, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the changes to the sick pool policy.
We ain't talked about sick pool policy.
Okay, well, then that 12-month look-back then.
C only. We ain't talked about sick pool policy. Have you talked about the sick pool policy?
We're on C, we've talked about...
I entertain a motion to approve the 12-month look-back period for tracking part-time and variable seasonal employees' hours.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Now, you wanna do the sick pool policy?
Sick pool policy. Sick pool actually originated in 2001. Okay?
I can't really, I don't think your mic is... You can't hear? No, see? Yeah.
I think it might be the mic.
Hear me now.
That's better, I think. Could y'all hear it now?
How about now?
How about now?
Okay, I'll try to talk a little bit louder.
Thank you.
Okay. The sick pool policy originated in 2001. What this policy is, it allows our full-time employees leave time if they have exhausted all of their available leave times, sick leave, holiday time, vacation time, comp time. To apply for the pool, it must be of a catastrophic nature. Approximately two years ago, some of the wording was changed on the sick pool policy to include that the sick pool eligibility would end when FMLA ends. Family Medical Leave Act has a window of time that expires and the sick pool allows for 1,440 hours. If the employee has already exhausted all of their FMLA, they're no longer eligible for the sick pool. I am going to recommend that we take the FMLA wording out of there. I sent all of you a spreadsheet that showed you the number of people that have, that we processed through the sick pool. I think it's a disadvantage to the employees. I don't think there's a very, there's very minimal cost. I believe it's to our advantage. Give you a good example, we just had one return to work from the sick pool. I had asked that one employee be grandfathered in, the employee has returned to work, so that doesn't need to happen. I just think that moving forward, that that wording on FMLA needs to be removed. That's my recommendation.
You're recommending that we remove the FMLA portion of the sick pool policy?
That the FMLA, that the sick pool ends when the FMLA ends.
You concur with that, Richard? I think you talked to us about that before. Okay, does anybody have any questions with Kathy on this? I remember getting an email on that and reading it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the changes to the sick pool policy based on the recommendations of the Treasurer and the HR Director.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Consider and take appropriate action to accept donation items from EDC. Okay. As you know, we have terminated our agreement with the city to perform ED functions together and at the time, we had several assets to be divided up between the city and the county. The city took some of the smaller items. We actually received a combination copier, printer, scanner and a table with nine chairs. Big, heavy table with nine chairs, I believe, and assorted supplies. We have taken possession of all of the marketing paraphernalia that the city has access to use when they go to their, whatever EDC functions they want to use. And we are housing those in an air-conditioned area. So I move that we accept the donations, the items from the EDC back to the city, back to the county. Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Tout to accept the donated items from the split-up of the EDC from the county-city combination. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the Hood County Historic Commission and the IT Department's request for the permission to build a Facebook page through Civic Plus or HCHC to promote Hood County Sesquicentennial as well as its other activities. Hello, Ms. Massey, how are you this morning?
I need you to go with so I can go fix fence.
There you go, okay.
The Commissioners Court gave the responsibility for next year's 150th birthday of the county, the Sesquicentennial, to the Historical Commission of our county. In trying to do our best job for that, we wish to set up a Facebook page that will create the awareness of the Sesquicentennial and the history of our county. The content will be updates on the Sesquicentennial plans, the calendar of events for the different celebrations for the areas and towns in the county, factoids of Hood County history, old pictures, memories. Content will be managed. Won't be just any old thing can be put on there. It will have to go through the Chairman of the Historical Commission, which right now is me. It will have to go through either the Chairman or one of the officers and to utilize somebody who actually knows what the computer and all of this, how you do it. Andrea Sutton of the IT Department has graciously been conned into helping us with this, but we did need your blessing to do it. Is that okay?
Okay. You've heard from Christie. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Hood County Historic Commission, Historical Commission and the IT Department's request for permission to build this Facebook page through Civic Plus to promote the Hood County Historical Commission, to promote the Sesquicentennial. Now, will this be a link to our Hood County page?
There will probably be a mention of it on the Hood County page on...
Okay. Maybe a link, hyperlink to the...
Start me to lying sometime.
Pardon?
I don't even know what to do.
Judge, this is gonna be part of the county's page.
Okay.
All of the county protocol, all the county colors and design specifications. It will be part of that and Facebook access to that will be a feed that comes from the homepage as well. So it meets all of the stipulations and criteria that the court has set into place before when we built the website.
Okay.
So all of IT, anybody in IT will have opportunity to take something down?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the request from the Sheriff for permission to apply for the 2015 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Funds.
Judge, Commissioners, they've been doing this for a while. I asked them before you today to ask permission to forward and request the grant. The way this grant works is we pay upfront and then they reimburse 50%. Based on last year's prices, haven't got new quotes this year, but we get it under state contract and most time we've gone through like you've been saying, it's in the 825, $850 range per vest. But I suppose depending on what maybe has changed with quotes, and this will be open not just to my office, but Fire Marshal's Office, Constable's Office, Law Enforcement of Hood County, so we could spend up to $20,000. I haven't got with each one of the Constables or the Fire Marshal, but Ray had said that he'd lost it. Hard to miss, so top end, we can spend up to $20,000, but if approved, half of that. So this process moves forward by me submitting the application and then when it's approved, then we'll move forward with that amount of vests that are approved through that.
Okay, yeah, we do this over here. Do you, do I have a motion to allow the Sheriff to pursue this grant for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Funds?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Dever, is that right?
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you, Sheriff. All right, consider and take appropriate action, authorize County Judge to sign the data use agreement between the Texas Health and Human Services Enterprise and Hood County.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. Okay, this is an agreement, the state is trying to comply with HIPAA laws and this agreement is totally new for all the county clerks. It's an amendment to the state remote site agreement. Also, the third-party vendor information for the counties that contract with the third-party disperse, to disperse birth certificates.
It's for birth certificates?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't understand why it was HIPAA, but...
It's confidential for the HIPAA laws.
Death certificates are, I mean, the information on death certificates are still protected for 50 years. Birth certificates, Dean said, was 75.
Birth certificates are...
75, death certificates are 50 years. That has protected health information. Name and diagnosis, I mean.
Yeah, I understand, but...
Introducing the HIPAA laws, basically.
I can see the genealogy people going crazy over this, you know? Really, you know?
I took it to the county, I mean, the county attorney, she reviewed it.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to allow the County Judge to sign a data use agreement between Texas Health and Human Services in Hood County.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion?
Who's gonna monitor this?
But that's actually what we're gonna talk about in 12. Just want to skip down to 12?
Well, I'm just asking that question because this is, you know, if it's a new item and Kathy's new as well, but if it's new, you know, I don't, budget time, everybody needing 12 different people for either security officer, okay, from item 12, but that's fine, we have a motion and a second, I just, it's...
Well, you wanna discuss 12 now and then we'll come back and take a vote on 8?
No, we have to do this, of course, and we have a motion and a second. I'm fine with it, but I just, it's awful Greek and it's pretty vague when you read the contract. It's Texas Health and Human Services Enterprises and Hood County, but, you know, what about other offices? I mean, why is it just the county clerk?
Well, now, this agreement's just because we use state information to, we do birth certificates for, or death certificates throughout, and birth certificates throughout the entire county, throughout the entire state.
Okay, so this only affects the vital, we're gonna see one, I mean, what is this?
More than likely, we'll, I mean, that, when this came about, I never even realized how much protected health information we had out. I mean, we do mental commitments through all the courts, the jail, the jail actually dispenses medications and provides treatments through the jail. They've classified people as either covered entities or business associates. A covered entity is someone who actually provides healthcare. The business association, associates would be like the courts, the clerks' offices, all the judges, JP's offices, that handle that kind of private healthcare information. And so... And so to do this, I mean, we already, we already handle the information right now. Our problem is we just don't have the, the protocol set in place to, you know, have a security officer and to ensure that we don't get deemed. All guardianship should fall under this too. Yes.
Yes. These are brand-new HIPAA laws that just came down through the state, and that's what this contract is saying.
So are all guardianship files going to be sealed now and not available to the public?
Well, the HIPAA laws, we're just, what this contract is, is an addendum to what the contract that we already have.
How's somebody going to come get a birth certificate? I mean, does it change anything if somebody needs to come get a birth certificate?
It doesn't change anything.
So anybody can come get a birth certificate, or you got to be like the person?
No, not anybody can come get a birth certificate. You have to be related to that person.
How you going to, I mean, is that addressed in there? I mean, for HIPAA?
All it's, all it's doing is saying that we have to have confidential information. We have to disclose or have access to the confidential information. It's stating, "The purpose of the DUA is to facilitate creation receipt, maintenance, use, disclose, or access confidential information with the contract, contractor, and describe contractor rights and obligations with respect to the confidential information and the limited purposes for which the contractor may create." It's, it's a, it's a contractor, Hood County is the contractor with Texas Health and Human Health.
Okay, so death, you just said, well, ago, you said death?
Fifty years. It's considered...
What if press wants that? I mean, what do they have to do to get that? What do they do today versus now? What do they do, what do they do if they wanted it today or yesterday before this was entered?
Same laws, I mean, it's the same laws that are already in, in place.
Yeah, the laws are in place already. We just don't have anything set up to ensure that those laws are followed. And that, that's what the establishment of the private officer and the security officer is.
HIPAA is just, they're just wanting to us to like appoint a security officer, like, like HR would be our security officer. They're just wanting us to take additional steps for, to satisfy their means. We already have security steps in place, but they're, they're wanting us to take additional steps to satisfy the HIPAA laws that are now in place. We already have security features of our own, but now they're wanting HIPAA laws.
They're wanting an overseer.
Okay, now, if we wanted, let's say I wanted to come get James's birth certificate, and I said, "I'm James's cousin."
You can't.
I mean, what, what do, we'll have to establish, uh...
Sorry, James.
I can see that, I can see that. We'll have to establish a protocol that's, so that they could, they have to prove within that.
Right, but you can't because you're his cousin. You have to be directly related. I mean, we have laws in place already.
They have been laws, yeah. All they want to do is a security officer and a...
Now, the security officer works strictly with the, the health information.
I mean, and the privacy, the security deals with the electronic transfer, transfer of any of that information.
Right. These are just the HIPAA laws.
Yeah.
But we have our own laws that were, were well-established.
Oh, and 12, I know we're not talking about that yet, but that security officer, is that an existing employee, is she just going to name as?
It's just like, "Richard, can you please be our security officer?" Okay, now we've satisfied the HIPAA law.
Our staff can be one.
Right.
Tona, you got anything to weigh in on this? I mean, to ensure that our systems are set up so that information cannot be freely disseminated. I mean, we have it right now. I mean, we have it right now, so, I mean, or that someone can't readily access that information. Well, the security, now, now, the security deals with just the electronic transmission of information, and their, their job is to ensure that that information isn't disseminated randomly or improperly.
All right, John. I was using that.
Yeah.
Okay.
They would just about, every office will, will probably have to have their own security officer.
Why did this rear its head this month, and we haven't done it since 1996, when the act was, the public law was enacted? That's my...
It was just enacted.
Well, in September.
Then, we have a motion second on the floor, but I'm asking for a workshop with all entities that have the jail, the Sheriff's Department, the county attorney, because this is not, there's a lot of words in here when you talk about us as contractor that we've got to be responsible for.
They were actually asking for it to be done by the end of March.
What are they going to do to us if they don't?
Deadline that, you know, they, and I was...
We should have had a workshop on this.
Well, yeah, I mean, the contractor language is not appropriate, because we, in this, in this format, we're business associates. They mentioned that, they referenced that a few times, but they kind of, they kind of interchangeably use those two words.
It's incorporated a contract in Travis County, Texas, okay?
Right. I mean, that's just because the state...
I understand exactly what it is. He's pushing the burden of anything from the state back to the county levels again. But there's, there's, there's some vague areas here. Tona is back there, she has a lot of records that get sealed, or in her court. The sheriff's back there with the jail. I mean, you got HR sitting here. There's nobody got up to that podium and explained it exactly verbatim the way this needs to go down. There's a lot of unanswered questions here.
Well, I, I sent it through the county attorney.
That doesn't educate us, though, Katie, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just telling you, I don't know, I'm not voting on something I don't know what I'm voting for.
I, I agree. I agree. I, you know, going through the...
When I read this and it says, "A contractor shall or will do this, and will do that, and will do this, and will do that," there's a lot of unanswered questions at the IT area. I mean, does the sheriff know what he's, who has to do because it's, I mean, we're not talking about just releasing birth certificates and death certificates. It says HIPAA.
Right. Okay, I just...
I mean, we already have the responsibility, now we got to create the entities that are going to be responsible for it.
Laura, then she said you reviewed it.
That, uh...
County attorney reviewed, she said.
Actually, it's Deanna, she was out.
I understand that completely, 100%. Me either.
You want to table this, then, and...
We need a workshop. We need everybody in the same room explaining it to us in layman's terms, so that the sheriff knows at the jail, Richard knows at HR. You know, Don Linn is a good example. What if a road hand gets hurt out there working on the scene, and he says something, or somebody says something, and it says right here? I mean, where does it, where does this go back to? I mean, HIPAA's a big deal, folks.
Right. Well, when I talked to him on the phone, they explained that it had to do with the birth certificate.
This is just a business association between us and the state on the birth certificates in this contract right here. We'll probably get another one for, do we do statewide death certificates? We do?
Yes.
Probably get one if that comes from a different entity. I mean, that might be from the vital statistics. But, I mean, we're, we're going to be seeing a lot of these, so we've got, we do need a workshop or something to create...
This, this, to me, was not explained that this had to do with the whole county, the Sheriff's Department, the other departments. To me, this was the county clerk department, and it had to do with the birth certificates.
Yeah, yours only deals with the birth certificates.
Okay, but wait a minute, it says Computer Matching Privacy Act. That's not just birth certificates, that's IT, that's everything in the world, I mean, that has a lot to do with a lot of things, that's only...
They didn't explain that on the phone to me then, so, you know, maybe we do need to have a workshop, maybe we should table this. I, I don't know.
Mr. Barton, you know what you're going to vote on here?
I'm going to make a motion to table...
Wait a minute, no, 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 can't do that yet, because we, we can let it die, we already have a motion in a second, so we got to do something with that. So I, I have a motion in a second on item number eight, which is to take appropriate action. All in favor? Nobody. Okay, the, all opposed? Aye. Motion failed. Okay, now, we can do whatever.
Make a motion to table the item and...
Set up a workshop.
Well, predicated on, we need some additional education, so...
I mean, that, that, okay, so you're making a motion that we create a workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, have a motion made by Commissioner Barton to set up a workshop, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And I've talked with the hospital, and they will provide us some guidance.
Okay, I need to, we need to get dates on that, and I'll set that up, okay? All right, consider and take appropriate action, letter to TDSHS Vital Statistics regarding local registrar, star change, registrar change.
Yes, the Justice of the Peace is the local registrar of births and deaths in the Justice of the Peace precinct. However, the duty of registering births and deaths may be transferred to the county clerk if the Justice of the Peace and the county clerk are agreeing, writing, and the agreement is ratified by the Commissioners Court. So I'm suggesting that you ratify the agreement. Motion to...
Have the, and the JP's are, are all on board with...
I have letters from all of them, too.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of this vital statistics to, from the JP's to the local registrar, which is the county clerk.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the funding of the economic development proposal by Burns Development Group. Doug, you want to come up and talk about that?
I won't go into all the detail that I put in the email that I sent.
Doug, could you adjust that? I can't hear you.
Better. Apparently, it's just, I'll just speak up. I don't know what the deal is. We have asked, and by we, it's a group of us that are just meeting, Taut, and Councilman Jerry Couch, and himself, and... And we meet every couple of weeks just talking about economic development situations. One of the things that came up was Development Group. Her name from the folks that is Financial Impact Study, back data source out of Boston, and everyone talked about that, that when you tell them the data about a company that might have located in her county, it'll give the county and the city as well financial impact over 10 or 20 years. Those folks coming bring this many jobs and the kind of jobs that they're getting. Talking about, talking to him down there, Jerry Walker, who is with Data Source, said, "You know, a lot of those questions you asked me, Doug, answered by Burns out of, Burns, data, Burns Development Group, excuse me. You've been doing this for 30 years." And so I called her on a number of occasions about such things as innovative RFIs that we submit. Talking about, she has other ideas, and it turns out she's actually worked on one over. Thing led to another, and talking with this group, decided to have me, folks, and City Council, proposal. Jerry has approved to pay for one-third of it. Asking next to, City Council to pay for one-third of it. They will get, or she will, executive session review with City Council, hands to do, and would like her to look into. Thing is done, report is complete, Executive Council review. Plus a status, if you will, of development in Hood County and Burnberry. Goes farther than just incentives, it also goes into prepare those RFIs. This thing's gotten so competitive that we've talked many times, that we've talked about that she's involved in this kind of stuff. Better to prepare those RFIs and anything else to do with development. So I'm here this morning, and on the agenda, ask you folks to approve the cost. The cost is $24,000 plus expenses, Rockwall, and she would come down however many times we need to accomplish.
Well, there's a couple, there's a problem, I see, is because this is not a budgeted line item, and I think if we do something like this, we need to take it up in the budget negotiations. That's my opinion. What does any other Commissioner say? Anybody got an opinion on this?
My, my primary concern was we were, this is going to a private individual, and goes back to part of what Butch said, you know, we can't gift anything to private individuals, you know, if, if we're not paying for a study for an individual, if it would affect just the county, we could do that. But this, this has other entities concerned, and that's, that's the problem I had with it, and I, I brought that up in front of Jerry.
Study is not going to benefit Hood County and Burnberry. That's, that's the primary goal for economic development. Jerry gets into economic development only through the Commerce Center, no other way, and Crescent Crossroads as well, they get into it through Crescent's cross, Crescent Crossroads. Study directed to help Jerry necessarily sell the Commerce Center. Talking about economic development within Hood County.
When you said something about executive session, what were you talking about?
Well, she would come down, or she, it doesn't have to be executive session, she would come down and talk to you folks and say, "That's what I'm planning to do, guys, think about this."
Yeah, I, I think that would need to be an open session. Only thing that we could go into executive session, if we were talking about a specific company, and we, we wouldn't want that to be, I, I think any kind of general conversations have to be an open session. Anybody got any other comments about this? If, if not, like I said, I'll entertain a motion to table it until we can go through budget discussions on this. Anybody have any? I'll, I'll make that motion if, to table it. Does anybody have any other comments? Were you seconded table, then? Going to die for lack of a second?
I'll make a motion we pass on this.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Berry that, that we pass on this opportunity. Does, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Doug. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the request from Sheriff to promote three, promote employees to CS3 Step 6 as supervisor.
Judge Commissioners, long time authority, promising to be as designed effective.
Right. So I would like to promote, still there, to CS3 Step 6.
So I would like to promote a person still there to CS3 Step 6 as supervisor, higher placement than it'll be level I would like to get. That's where the old person was actually saving some...
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to allow the sheriff to promote an employee to CS3 Step 6 as supervisor, since he has lost his supervisor in the commissary. Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh, I think you beat you. Commissioner Tout made the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate, now, what are we gonna do about this HIPAA policy creating the security office? Is that part of the tabling? For the workshop?
For the workshop, yeah, that was the act, we're taking the action.
Okay, we're gonna move that to the workshop. Purchasing, consider and take appropriate action on a request of the Lipan Marshall. I have, that has been, I believe, tabled. I have a motion to table this from Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to regard the primary and alternate contracts of the RFP 2015-002, non-specific aggregate materials, road operation materials. Don, would you make that a little simpler for me to read, please?
In conjunction with Don Linney, the Director of Road Operations, we bid this out, and we bid back. You should have all that in your packet to see what the pricing is, and things like that. With his recommendation, his suggestion of contract, aggregate materials, RFP 2015-002, the primary vendor go-to Fort Worth Crest Stone. Also recommended that Squaw Creek materials and Vulcan materials be awarded as alternates to allow purchases of materials when the projects are located within the approximate area of those plants. We normally go pick up all these products. We do not have them delivered. On your price sheet, you'll see price at the top, and that's the pickup price, and then all the other prices are delivered. And that is our request to award this contract as I've stated.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. I want you to restate that motion one more time, Nelda.
On non-spec aggregate materials, RFP 2015-002, the primary vendor award go-to Fort Worth Crest Stone. It is also recommended that Squaw Creek materials and Vulcan materials be awarded as alternates.
Okay, you've heard that motion made by Commissioner Barry and seconded by Commissioner Dever that was restated by the purchasing director. Is any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Consider and take appropriate action to award primary alternate contracts for flexible base type A grade two road materials.
Again, in conjunction with Don Linney, we bid bids for these items. You should have that off, though. We would like to award the contract for flexible base materials for primary vendor go-to Squaw Creek materials. We also recommend that Fort Worth Crest Stone and Vulcan materials be awarded as alternates, again, because we might be in that area when we're going cheaper that way.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to award the RFP 2015-003, flexible base materials for the primary vendor go-to Squaw Creek materials. It is also recommended in this, that the Fort Worth Crest Stone and Vulcan be awarded alternates to purchase this material when the projects are located in the approximate area of those plants. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Discuss and consider approving the vouchers for Pat Barrett with the Lighthouse Ministries Residence in Brazos River Acres to use the Citizens Collection Station, Commissioner Precinct Two.
Yes, basically, James will have the details on it. Brazos River Acres, a lady over there, Pat Barrett, she doesn't live there, but she has a ministry in the area, and she's gotten folks together that are interested in trying to clean up that area. And both James and I have been out there and discussed it with her, and she's reaching out for any support she might be able to get. I think it's a real step in the right direction, if you're familiar with that area. And I'd like to, I'd like to have a motion after James talks, to support that by giving some coupons for dumping.
You have any, like a number or anything?
James, I think I remember.
After speaking with Pat, she, first of all, she would be grateful for anything the court could do. But further discussion, I mentioned 10 vouchers over a four-week period.
How many?
Ten.
Ten?
For the month of May. Because she does not have a lot of volunteers, but she needed some additional time to pull that together, but she felt like the month of May would be adequate. It would give me more time to coordinate with her and make sure we had adequate space in the...
We're hoping that this will stimulate the cleanup in that area, that we are reaching out as the county and want to partner with that effort, and we hope, hopefully, this will get some visibility, and others will get on board.
Okay, then, the way I understand it, yes, go ahead.
Do we make a decision on that? I'd like to actually make a decision on that, because we cannot give this to a county, we cannot give to even a nonprofit without making sure that we are serving the public purpose and getting compensation.
I know, the public purpose is...
Public purpose, I think, is evident, but I need to do some research. We've had several other nonprofits that wanted to... If we need to sort of challenge with that, too.
Okay. Well, are you, well, okay, let's, I'll entertain a motion to table this until the county attorney can get back with us on the legality of doing this.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Barton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout to table this. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Let me just say, though, if we can't figure out a way to let homeowner associations and groups pick up and bring stuff to the dump day, then we're gonna have to hire a workforce to go out and clean up the county. Text dot is cut their contract, it only cleans up twice a year now. I have my phone rings off the wall constantly with people furious because there's trash on the roadway. So if that's the case, we need to have a dump day, and let them bring it to a dump, but I mean, it's, we've gotta figure out a way to let this happen, or find an alternative, because everybody's complaining right now of the trash on the roads. The sheriff's got, doesn't have inmates, because we've hounded the county and district attorney to get the misdemeanors out of jail. We have no inmate labor anymore that goes out and does anything. So either that, or we have to hire people to go out and pick up trash.
Okay. All in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Barton and seconded by Commissioner Tout to table this until the county attorney can get back with us? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. It is now 10:40, and we adjourned.